Member to the Westboro TV. Discuss town meeting articles, of which there are three. Vote to reappoint the superintendent to Assavitt Valley Collaborative and an executive session. I assume since it's on here that we probably will need to do it. Okay. So with that, please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The public, the religion, the land, one nation, under God, in this school, in this nation.
Okay, we have minutes to approve for August the 28th, 2023. Is there a motion on minutes?
I'd like to move to approve the minutes from August 28th, 2023.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye? And now, after this long wait, it's time for Eagle Scout recognition.
Thank you. So we always find this a really enjoyable way to start our meetings, and I'm pleased to have two scouts from Troop 100. I'm going to invite them up to join us. We have Josh Delal, who is going to come up, and I'll share about his Eagle project, and Joe Dodarian. So I'm going to invite you to come up and join us. Welcome, gentlemen. I think it's important for our viewers who are watching to know that we take time to recognize civic duty, support, and contribution in Westboro. And with so many vibrant, active scouting troops in our community, it really is a pleasure to see the way that they contribute. So we're going to take just a minute, and I'll highlight a little bit about both of their Eagle projects, and then I'll let you ask them any questions or make any comments. And then, guys, we usually will make sure that we invite our school committee up front. We'll give you a certificate, and we'll take your photo. And then I reassure them that we do not make them sit through our whole meeting, so. Let me begin first with Josh's project. As a member of Troop 100, he's been really active through a really many, serving many years. And I think after having been quartermaster in a variety of other projects, it's a pleasure to see him having completed his Eagle project. He did a clearing of invasive species on our trails, and he was working over near the Gilmore Pond area and worked to clear a section of trail, working with people to make sure that this all-new, all-access trail, and I'm interested to have Josh be able to tell us more about it. Planned by the Westboro Community Land Trust, allowing an opportunity for more accessibility for people to actually use all of the trails available. And I think this has been completed in a way that allows people of all abilities and benefits to access our trails. I think that's a real interesting highlight of his project, and I look forward to letting him share a little bit about it with you. And then I also want to take a moment and highlight Joseph's project. Again, Joseph has been a member of Troop 100 for many years, contributing across a range of leadership opportunities, from working with the younger Cub Scouts to coordinating community service, and serving, again, the placing of our veterans' flags and the whole range of what our troops do for us. Joseph's Eagle project, again, a different one than we've seen, delivered care packages to deployed service members on the aircraft carrier USS George H.W. Bush. And I think it'll be really interesting to hear, and he provided a packet for you, sharing some about his project, which was lovely. So, again, immensely pleased to see the range of projects that these Eagles are contributing, and I want to congratulate both of you on creative and looks-like, interesting projects. And I guess I would open it up to the committee, and they might have some questions for you.
Well, I'll start off with congratulations on attaining your Eagle Scout. That's quite, quite an honor. So in terms of clearing the trail and making it more accessible, could you just share a little bit about what you were trying to clear out to make the path available for everyone?
Yeah, so I was trying to clear out mainly two invasive species, the multifloral rose and the Japanese honeysuckle, and clear out some of the logs and sticks from the trail, and just to make the trail more accessible for everybody.
That's great. And so by accessible, do you mean like people in wheelchairs or strollers, or really kind of anything?
Yeah, anybody will be able to use the trails from now on, anybody in wheelchairs or strollers, yep.
And have you hiked there before? You learned about clearing that up? You know, how did you find out about Gilmore? Because not too many people know about it.
Well, I had been there before a couple of times, and I had obviously like kind of noticed that there were a lot of invasive species and stuff, so I kind of reached out to the WCLT to see if I could help them clear out the invasive species.
Sure they were happy to have your help. That's great. Anyone else?
Yeah, what did you do with the debris? Was it shredded there, or did you have it disposed of somewhere else?
I, I, I kind of transported all the invasive species to the back of the trail, where they're out of like view of, of the whole trail, just in a separate section.
I, I'm curious, why, why those two invasive species? And did you find lots of other invasive species present as well?
Well, it was those two mainly, just because those are the most prominent in the area, and I think that there may have been a few other ones, but those are the most main ones and the most threats to the native species there.
Congratulations to both of you. I know it's been a long journey, and you made it. I hope you're excited for what comes next. Joseph, what did you, how did you come up with this project? And how many packages did you, did you actually send out?
First, I'll start with how I came up with the idea. So a couple of years ago, my cousin was serving, and I would send care packages to him every so often. So that, when I was thinking of what I should do for a project, that first came to mind. And I had a total of 100 care packages, 80 of which went to the said aircraft carrier, and 20 went to the Central Mass Vets.
What, what, what part of the project did each one of you find the hardest? Which part of it?
I would say trying to get all of the items, because I used an Amazon wishlist to gather all the supplies, and I would spread the word around the troop and some friends that I could see that I could donate. And it was, I believe it was over the summer that some items were going up in price or becoming out of stock, so it took a while, but I was still able to get all the items for the day of the project to get them all shipped off.
Hold on, how about you?
Well, the hardest part of the project for me was probably like planning everything and making sure that like I had all my stuff ready and like had enough people coming for each day, and that everything would kind of work out the way that it was supposed to work out.
Yeah, good job, boys.
Joseph, I wanted to ask, so how did you identify the most important items that you wanted to send? Because I noticed in here you've got spiral notebooks, composition notebooks, so how did you decide what the need was and?
Well, it was really from stuff that I would send to my cousin, sent a couple of years back, and then I just added on some like toile, toile trees that you might have wanted, or like in the care package, I put a crossword book for something to spend your excess time on.
I saw you had a thanks, a few thank you notes that came back. Sounds like they were really appreciative.
Yeah, one, one came from the ship, and others were from the, from the donation, donations that were made. And so far, that's the only one I've gotten from the actual ship itself. The, the person who actually sent it was the Eagle Scout himself, so.
Oh, wow. That's amazing.
Nice to hear, my friend.
Yeah, great connection.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome.
So really, an honor to have you come before us and to be able to share to the wider community the work of scouting, to provide for both our community at large, and then, again, Joseph, your project reaching beyond Westboro. So thank you very much. So typically, I make the school committee come out here, and we give you a certificate, and we do a photo. So if you guys would like to do a photo op, we'll do some individuals with just you two, and then we can do some as a group.
Cool.
Congratulations, family. Yes. Happy Eagle Scout father, and I know it's a family project. To provide the all-teacher scout to have me. Congratulations, really. They're seniors, or are they children? Nice to meet you. Thank you for coming. Be enjoyable. Take care.
You know, Joseph?
All right. So thank you, everybody, for moving us through kind of a nice, enjoyable start to kick off. I want to begin with highlighting, and I know Daniel will share some more specifics, but just want to say I sent a note to faculty on Friday, just indicating what an enjoyable start to the year that we had had. You know, you're moving 4,000 students and 700-plus faculty, and the activity of engaging, of just like getting everything up, up speed to the start of the year is always exciting and often fraught with the little errors that can happen. And it was just an amazingly smooth start, and that doesn't happen by accident. It's all of the custodial team, it's the principals, the admin team, the faculty on the ground, everybody doing what they need. A big shout out to Cindy Crowley in Transportation and her work to get our bus routes evened out and organized, to really the lunch team getting lunches up and running. It just, it really is quite a function of a well-oiled machine to see everything kind of kick into gear and all the students arriving. So having watched many, many openings, I just want to say that this was a very smooth start to the year. And I'll let Daniel share more highlights. I have two particular things that I wanted to highlight to you in my update. I gave you a note on one of them. This year, they're starting again, the Citizens Academy. It was done years ago, I think my first or second year here, where they invited citizens from the community to come gain knowledge about how the organizational structure of government and town works. And this year, they've reactivated it, and they have a full group that applied and actually have a waiting list, which is pretty exciting. And I wanted to share with you that the schools will be partnering with the library and the Youth and Family Services for the two-hour block of time that we have to share with this group about our role and the work that we do, and then to answer questions. So I'll be presenting that, I'll be pulling together a slide deck, and I think Kristin was the person that presented with me before, and it was really enjoyable. So I just want to let you know that I would welcome any of you joining me. It's an open invitation. I think if you all want to come, I'll post it and make sure that you can all be there. But I'd like you to consider it. It's going to be October 11th, from 6:30 to 8:30, we'll be up in the Forbes Conference Room, and we will be presenting to this group of community members about how school committee works, how the function of the town and the schools interact, and all that goes on in our side of kind of the town government. So you can see that I put some focus notes there for you and a little bit around how we'll break up the time, and I would encourage you just to think about it. If you can come, just let me know. I can either represent all of us and what we do, or would welcome having you there, and we've provided a time for questions and information. And Hallie, I would love to have you there as well. I think it's a really neat opportunity. So again, I just wanted to contribute that as an update, and I can email you more information, and I'll share the PowerPoint once I make it. Also, another note I wanted to provide today is that we communicated to Westboro families today and to the larger community that we offered to host three games for Algonquin. Their fields are shut down, they've displaced all of their sports to other communities and to away games for their season, and they reached out to us to see about whether or not they could host three home games here that would be considered their home games, where other teams that they were in the season with weren't able to host it at their space. So we offered to be a community support to them. They are, they will follow all of our guidelines, as they do, and they will pay for all of the please detail, everything, there's no impact to us cost-wise. It really is a good citizenship act of sportsmanship that we are opening up our home to them for three games. And I think we want to make sure we communicated to the community as a whole and to you as well, all of that, that use falls within the parameters of numbers of games that we always set as kind of our target of a goal. I also want to be clear, too, that while we wanted to make sure that we could be welcoming to a neighbor and, you know, friendly competitor, but that we weren't going to displace any of our teams. So all of our teams all were fully scheduled for their rotation of night games and day games and their full season, and we fit the three games in without displacing our, our own teams. So it would be a priority to be clear that we have to prioritize our teams and their schedule and their special times, as well as the opportunities for them to play under the lights. So all of them have three night games that they schedule, and we didn't displace any of our seasonal competitions, which I think was just an important acknowledgement, and Algonquin wouldn't have asked out of us. But we are able to host them for three, and we're happy to have them with us. We'll make sure that all the parameters around our sound systems and things are all exactly the same as, as we run. We're clear with them, like we don't try to do over-announcing, that we try to make sure that we're respectful, the fact that we're in a community area, all those pieces. I'm pleased that we've been able to help them, and, you know, if you have any questions, you can follow up with me, but I'll certainly keep you updated as, as we move forward to supporting them in the games.
Is the schedule for the, for their use set, and what time of day are those games?
So those are Eve, those are three home night games for them, so they'll, they usually...
But relative to the use of the field here, do we have the, the time of day and the dates set yet? Are they being negotiated?
Yeah, no, they're in, sorry, I didn't hand you the memo. They are set. Thank you. I was like, aren't you looking at that? I just gave it to you. I pushed that out today, and my apologies. 9:14, 9:29, and 10:27. So September 14th, September 29th, and 10, and October 27th will be the three that we will support having them at our home field. I can send this to you. I forget, you're not on the list served, Steve. I will send it to you right afterwards. I would imagine those of you with children got it today. So if you have any questions, follow up with me. Levi's coordinating, Levi Hansen, our A.D., is coordinating with their A.D., and we'll make sure that things go smoothly. All right?
Okay, thank you.
So those are my major updates for tonight that I wanted to bring to you, and I just, oh, and lastly, I will say next week I'll be developing my next superintendent spotlight, and if you have topics or ideas, you want to start to rotate, or you want to come on my show and talk about being a school committee member, we're going to start a rotation. I think our next, our next focus is going to be on homework, family time, prioritizing routines at the start of the year, and what we know about research and what it means to create family time in whatever construct that works for you, so that you're getting time together, and different highlights around tips for homework at the different stages of age, and that'll be the focus. I, I'm working on who I'll have come do that sharing. I just kind of provide the platform, so it'll be different faculty people that will come in and contribute that content. So I'm excited for the year ahead. So that's my update tonight.
Very good. Anita?
The finance office has been busy all summer, and today we processed our first teacher's payroll. It's always a sigh of relief when that's done without any issues or problems, and Tammy can attest to that, so that was a big sigh of relief for our department. We also finished completing our end-of-year report that gets submitted to DUCI three weeks before the deadline, so we're also very proud of that. And right now, I'm just going to start getting into the FY25 budget.
As we will. Daniel?
Yeah. I don't have much to add to what Amber said about our opening. I'm just going to echo that, you know, it was, we were spreading out among all the schools, and you just, it was a pleasure to see the warmth and enthusiasm that both the teachers had and the kids had, and, you know, we were very pleased with how the buses were, were running, both in terms of, you know, drop-off and also pickup. We've been, it's been really good so far, and it's sort of exceeded our expectations. So we're just, you know, happy to have, you know, greeted the kids and got them situated before the heat wave comes later tomorrow and, and the next day, because they'll, they at least have had some practice going through the, the routine here before, you know, melting in our schools a little bit tomorrow.
Well, let's hope the blocking front moves, so in fact we can get more seasonal temperatures. You all set?
Yep.
Okay. Hallie?
So the students are all settling back into school nicely. I think we've all gotten into our rhythm. Fall, fall sports have started at the high school and Gibbons, and this is the first week of official games. We're all really excited. Open house for the high school is tomorrow. Student council scheduled our homecoming game and the homecoming dance and festival. And this week, all the high school math classes went through an academic integrity course, which is interesting and definitely helpful.
Good, thank you.
Akub?
I'd like to just, I don't have much to report as a committee member, but I'd like to speak as a parent and appreciate, two things. First is the buses. I think it was the first year in my memory that a bus on the first day came right on time. I think it surprised all the parents, because we always kind of expect on the first day it'll be at least five minutes late, and it wasn't. It was, it was sharp, right on time. And I'd like to express appreciation for the people that rolled out the parent square application. I think it's phenomenal. I'm really enjoying this as a parent, having three kids in the system and with tons of emails flying through my, my inbox. I mean, it was really hard to keep track of everything all the time. I had to keep separate notes, and, you know, having all of that in one place, being able to, to message the, the teachers, I don't have to worry about finding the email address. Everything is in the system, is exceptional. I'm, I'm really, really thankful for that. I think this is, this is a game changer for the communication between the parents and the, and the schools. So I'd like to express appreciation for that.
Kristin?
That's interesting, because I'm also going to speak as a parent. I'd like to give a shout out to the tech support team, particularly at the high school. My daughter has been experiencing some trouble with her laptop, not being able to connect to the Wi-Fi, and not being tech savvy myself, she was able to get a loaner Chromebook, and they loaned her like some connectors to have us try different things at home, and I just appreciate the trust that they have in the students to give out this equipment and that they have it, so that kids can use it temporarily while they get their tech equipment fixed and replaced and things like that. So I appreciate that. I know it's a behind-the-scenes type of service that they provide, but I imagine that they're busy all year long, so thanks to the tech team.
I think people have really, you know, it's, it's, it's actually hard to conceptualize that thousands and thousands of electronic devices that one, you know, small team is, is really working to manage effectively, so they, they are pretty amazing. Yeah, thanks.
Steve?
Yeah, just one announcement. I wanted to highlight an event that Westboro CPAC is partnering with the Federation of Children with Special Needs. On September 14th, there will be a listening session for parents. They're welcome to attend. There is between 5:30 and 6:30 a listening session for parents, and then from 6:30 to 7:30, it's a listening session for young adults who might be transitioning from high school into the career world. So September 14th. Thank you.
Sarah?
Nothing to report.
And my report is simply on, on building. We're going to hear about articles that, in effect, if, if they're voted at the Fall Town Meeting, will be additional projects for the school system. As far as the failed school goes, we're having a, a school building committee meeting on the 14th to discuss some bill payments, but also settlement discussions with the general contractor and the construction manager. So I'll probably have more to report in the future after that meeting. So with that, we have on the agenda citizens' requests. Is there anyone here who wants to speak to the committee? Seeing no interest, we'll move on. Tammy?
All right. So I'm pleased to welcome Tammy Castella, our Director of HR, who visits you at a couple key times during the year, at the start here, to give you an update on our hiring season and to take your questions, and then in the spring, where she brings her full report around the larger targeted goals of her department. So I'm going to turn it over to Tam and let her give you an update on how our hiring season went.
Hello. We've hired people. I first want to just reiterate what Anita said about tomorrow's first paycheck. I've been in education for just under 20 years, and getting the first paycheck out is always a monumental task, but especially this year, or every three years. A shout out to Paige Thomas and Eric Harrington, because they had six new contracts, seven new salary scales, two really complicated MOUs, and a few other tricky things for this payroll tomorrow. So I'm happy to report that we've only had a few emails and calls today that Eric and I handled. I'm sure there'll be a few more, but it was, it was a great team effort, and I'm really proud of them.
Hopefully they get, they got a check, but maybe not exactly what it should have been.
What I always say is if there's an error, we can fix it, but I don't, I don't foresee many. So we had a very exciting hiring season, a very busy summer as usual, and I would always be remiss if I didn't start by talking about the summer programs, because while we're in the middle of hiring permanent staff and offboarding permanent staff, we have several very successful programs going on that are very labor-intensive to run. So this year, we serviced, for lack of a better word, 761 students with about 133 staff members that we onboarded and then offboarded, and it was a successful summer yet again. We hired four new, whoops, I can't do this. We hired four new administrators this year, Anita being one, as you know. We hired an interim director of athletics, Levi Hansen. We have a new elementary student services coordinator, Carrie Curley, and we just hired a new assistant director of buildings and grounds, coming from Grafton, Tony Lemay, and he will start on Monday, September 11th.
And those are all positions of retirements or transitions that we refilled, not new?
Yes, yes. This is exciting to me, because this year, we had, we hired almost 30, 29 and 1/2 to be exact, professional staff, Unit A. And what's noteworthy about this isn't necessarily the breakdown of the staff, but last year, we hired 42 new professional staff, which was about 10% of our staff turned over. And this year, we've hired just under 30, which is 7.5%. So that is a significant drop in turnover, which HR geeks like me get very excited about that, so that is noteworthy. Same with our paraeducators and tutors. We've hired 27 overall, and last year at this time, we had hired 32, so we're a little bit under. Last year, our turnover was 22%, and right now, we are floating just under 17% turnover for our paraeducators and tutors. Long-term substitutes, we have, we continue to have staff members. Same with our paraeducators and tutors. We've hired 27 overall. And last year at this time, we had hired 32, so we're a little bit under. Last year our turnover was 22% and right now we are floating just under 17% turnover for our paraeducators and tutors. Long-term substitutes, we have, we continue to have staff members having babies, which is exciting and labor intensive. So far, we've only hired three long-term substitutes, but looking at what we have in the pipeline, there'll be another 10 to 15 hired this year. We've hired extended day staff and custodians and one person in the business office besides Anita in accounts receivable. So the summer in aggregate, we have about 75 school year staff that was hired, 133 summer program staff onboarded and offboarded. We've had 147 staff that we've offboarded so far. We do a lot of talking about onboarding, but offboarding is not as labor intensive, but still somewhat close. And I just want to do a big shout out to HR, payroll, data and technology because every new person we bring in and every person that we offboard, those four departments have to touch and make sure that everything is in order for them to either start their job or to leave the district. And I have always said that in human resources, my main role is to support our staff so that they have what they need to do their best work. And that is what we've done all summer and will continue to do. Lastly, remaining open positions. We're actually in a really good position right now. We have one open professional staff position at the high school. And then we have about four special education, special educator, I'm sorry, paraeducator, special education, paraeducator positions open right now. And other than that, we have a couple of new needs, but for the most part, our hiring is definitely winding down, at least for the time being. But we're in a good place and I'm really charged up with how things went this summer and I welcome any questions.
So with that, we're really far ahead of other school systems trying to replace teachers.
We're in a good spot. I've talked to some of my peers that are still have five to 10 teaching positions open. It was like it always is, a mad dash to the finish. The last two to three weeks in August was crazy getting people in, but I was really excited. We have a really experienced and diverse staff that we hired. Amber met every new teacher that came in and I just, I felt good about starting the year and where we're at and the people that we've hired. I mean, that's what human resources is all about, is getting the best people. And I think we've done that this year, most years, but this year in particular.
What's the one position that remains at the high school?
We have a teacher that's out on a child rearing leave and so we have to fill that position.
Are there any new positions that were created from last year? So I'm trying to, I know that you're talking about the replacement positions or that's what I'm assuming. So just trying to get an idea of if there's been a change.
We've hired a couple new positions based on need. We opened up a academic support center at the high school to help students who need help with homework and with their classwork. And so we hired one full-time person to cover that, a tutor, not a teacher, but a tutor. And we also are piloting a program at Fails to meet the needs of the special needs students. So we've hired one social worker at Fails to meet the needs of a growing population there of special education needs. So those would be the two big addition to staff that were necessary.
And just to enhance that, typically we hold the grants as, again, the special education, the IDEA grant is utilized for positions such as that if we had someone move into district where they required a paraeducator or some complex programming support. So the tutor to expand our overarching support to all students at the high school and the positions that Tam mentioned are both funded on the IDEA grant. Now sometimes positions will ride on a grant like that permanently. Or if they were to be proposed to be brought into budget, you would see them in the budget presentation that we would bring forward for FY25. So, you know, rotationally, the grants will pick up emergency-based positions for us and then they either rotate out or they're brought forward as proposed for budget or they're maintained in the grants. So that's the work that Sheri does with Anita and the parts of then the interaction as we move forward with you in our budgeting. I'm excited about the tutor position at the high school. We'll probably give you another update on that later. We really wanted to add another layer of homework and academic support for students just who want to swing in and get schedule organization, prep for a quiz, another place you could take a makeup test, someone to help you navigate reaching out to a teacher as you're trying to figure out the course load. Really looking at just providing in some additional layers for the range of the high school, which is now at 1,200 students. So, you know, as you've seen the slow increase of both just kind of students at the school, we want to keep layering in enough support so that there's plenty of adults to meet every child's need in the high school.
So right now, we're still, still well within what would be our maximum student to teacher ratio. I'm trying to also think about these students that came in that were unexpected, that we had talked about, that have been placed in town and how if, if in any way it has impacted the need for more hires or, you know, the class size, the student to teacher ratio.
So Daniel will do a report on that probably in two, is it two weeks, Daniel? I think we have a school committee meeting that he's coming before you where he'll show you. After we complete the October 1st report, you get kind of the hard numbers by class. But right now Daniel's tracking our, our school enrollment kind of numbers. And I mean, if you want to comment on where we're standing right now.
Yeah, it's pretty much where we projected we'd be with a couple of exceptions. But at the K, at the K6 level where we really like can have homeroom class size numbers, it's, the numbers are very good. We did have more kindergarten students than we anticipated at the Hastings School. Class sizes there are just under 20. I guess there might be a couple that have 20. We were anticipating more like an order of 16 for class sizes. So, but on the whole, the district has probably about 25 more students than we did last fall. So we're slightly up. That could be attributed to enrollments that we had not anticipated.
But you're going to provide us with a breakdown of that in terms of which students were placed versus just newcomers into town who have, you know, I'm more focusing on the state placements that have happened and, you know.
I guess we can, we can do a report of that sort, I guess, you know, if we, if we want, we can.
So the rotation of placement of students has been balanced out across. The place where you're going to hit that impact is going to be?
But I guess the grade levels that there being, you know, how many and what grade levels. And we can do a report of that, which, you know, traditionally we don't. We haven't had the issue, but it certainly is feasible to do.
I wanted to track the trend because, you know, we were talking about how we may, we don't have finality in that in terms of whether we'll be getting more students or not. So it would be a good idea to see how that's impacting our classrooms and budget, if at all.
Yeah, no, definitely we can add an addendum to the layer of that report. And so he can just enhance that information for you. Yeah. Yep.
Okay, Yakub, Kristin?
No questions, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tam. I think it's, you know, it gives you a picture of when you see over 150 onboarding, offboarding, hiring, everybody gets touched with a badge, a computer, some phones, all of the paperwork. Everybody enrolled to be paid. It is a machine up there, just a really important constant motion. But I think one of the things I'm immensely proud of with our team is it's very personal and connected. So I meet with all of the new teachers that we onboard and without, at 100%, they wanted to comment on how organized, personal and supported they felt their onboarding had been. And a piece of that being that they appreciated having a chance to meet with me. And, you know, I add another layer of just conversation about the broader district as they often are onboarding very specified to a position in a school in their mindset. I meet with them to talk about, you work for the Westboro community. Let me tell you about our community. Let me tell you about our faculty and let me give you a picture of the district you're now a member of. So we have been really thoughtful to try to enhance our onboarding so that it is inclusive and supportive. And I think this year we certainly heard it was, so I think that's good feedback. Thank you, Tam. You can go home.
Okay, the next item is update on the electric bus grant.
Thank you. Yakub and I have been working with two members from the Sustainable Westboro Committee to apply for EPA's Clean School Bus Grant. We partnered with a company but named Highland Fleets and they work with multiple school districts across the US to apply for a single application amongst numerous applicants. The, so I should just mention that I only started meeting about this just two months ago and Yakub had been working with the other members far before I did. So I have very limited information, but I have done the best I can in order to get updated as quickly as possible. So our plan was to apply for four electric buses. And we were going to be applying for it this month. And then we got a call about two weeks ago from Highland Fleets asking us to hold off on applying under round two because EPA had released the criteria for which round two applicants would most likely be heavily weighed to get granted the monies. And it was under low-income tribal nations and rural communities, which, of which Westboro unfortunately does not fall under. So they asked us to hold off on putting forth our application after we had completed all of the paperwork needed to do it. That's how it goes, yes. So round three is going to be lottery-based and they're anticipating releasing the criteria in November, December time. So they're going to reach back out to me once that criteria is released and round three is released and we're going to move forward with that.
Yeah, actually I'm glad that that's what occurred because the first time around, many people had applied, but they only gave it to the cities that met that kind of criteria. It's obvious that they thought about it again and decided to do the same thing again. So rather than waste people's time, I'm glad they told you to wait for, you know, for at least a fair shot at getting the grant. And it'd be very interesting to see how that turns out. Yakub, comments?
I just want to say, I mean, I think it was a little bit frustrating that EPA did not release information about this criteria sooner than that because we spent, you know, a significant amount of time, I think Anita spent more than me, on working on this, on this grant. And just to find out that we will make the application less attractive because we don't meet the criteria. So hopefully the next round will be more, more transparent as far as the criteria so that, you know, we can, we can decide early on whether we're going after this or not. I don't know if the lottery-based nature of it removes any criteria or not. We don't know.
Right.
But the thing is, we didn't have a chance at this point, no matter whether we submitted or not, because those criteria were coming.
Yes.
And it's almost identical to what they did the first time around.
Correct.
So at least even a lottery, you've got the luck of the draw, right?
Yes.
So anyway, thank you both for, for that effort. Annual improvement of student activity accounts. I think that's an Anita story.
That's me as well, yes. So the school activity audit is performed every year by our fiscal coordinator. She has done a wonderful job and she has only one school remaining to audit. The few findings that she noted were mostly incorrect dates of deposits that were recorded in error, but other than that, very minor. Also, every year, I mean, every three years, our external auditing firm Scanlon and Associates, they audit our school activity accounts as well. They did the last audit in 2021 and they're scheduled to come out again in December of '24.
So everything is okay, at least based on the quick summary of what I saw presented to us.
Correct, yes.
Very good.
Just to, just to give a shout out to the building level assistants who really, a lot of, I mean, you've got a lot of field trips and T-shirt sales and it's like, it's, it's a, it's definitely a cumbersome process. And so tracking, getting all the receipts from people, it's a little like herding cats, all the pieces that you're trying to pull together to manage those accounts. So for the amount of money that's in there, they really are doing a tremendous amount of work related to them and then auditing them is very detailed. And I just want to say she did a great job. She's a new, new person for us and I think she did a really good job to get in there and give them a good look, work it through with people, wrote an excellent report on each school and gave them the feedback they needed. So I believe that you need to vote to approve their annual update for the student activity accounts.
I move that we approve the student activity accounts as itemized with the fund balances as of the fiscal year end June 30th, 2023.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to ask a question. So if I'm understanding the vote correctly, my question would be, do we know what the balances were at the start of '23? I'm just trying to understand that.
So I do have that. So the balances that are listed on the memo, those are the, what they ended with. But if you like, I can forward you what the balances were at the beginning of FY23.
But when is this limit set and has it increased or is there an increment? It just?
So these are revolving fund accounts and however we got there to them, and I can't remember whether it's school committee that creates them or town meeting on our behalf, but there is an amount that's specified for the vote of the process. And like I said, I can't remember whether it's us or whether it's town meeting. It's probably town meeting.
Yeah, I think they're established via town meeting years and years ago and they're the standing student activity account through which they push all their funding. The limits are set, I believe, by the auditors based upon the rotation of the amounts that you typically need. I know at the high school, in my time here, I believe we raised the limit at the high school. It had been 30,000. It went to 50 because they had so much funding rotation through all the travel and clubs and organizations. So, you know, if they take in more funds at that limit, it causes a problem to the accounting expectations. So to answer your question, we did, that was raised through a school committee, you know, vote. And then the auditors, again, do the monitoring. So we can have Anita send you their starting balances. And the reports are very detailed that, that she did on each of the schools. And if you want those, happy to have those forwarded to you.
No, I'm going to, just the starting balances would be good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We can send you as much paperwork as you like.
Yeah, this, these revolving accounts are the repository for, for things that students pay for. Either their, let's call it dues for a given program or fundraising for a trip or something like that. It's, it's the bin where the money goes. And so it's actually student money that gets used for the purpose of the revolving fund.
Well, I guess, yeah.
It's important that in fact, all the things that you see as checks and balances on how it's used are enforced. And of course, the, the state pays attention to it as well.
Yeah, because previously we had seen reports on, you know, there's the stipends for the, for example, clubs and different activities and then there's also costs associated with travel and all that. So I'm just trying to understand, is that all encompassed? No, this is separate.
These are the, these are very much the building-based student act. It is confusing because it's called student activity account. And then you have the, you have the student activity fee. So very different items, okay? But I, good you asked the question because other people might be hearing and wondering the same thing. These are the student activity accounts, as Steve was saying, which are a small targeted account that is building-based and it's for all of the funds that come and go in and out of a school related to all the student activities, the club events that might be extra. But it's mostly like it's field trips, it's clubs, it's, it's class dues. It's, you know, all that kind of small minor amounts of money that pool in one spot and then come and go really quickly. And then the student activity fee, that's budgetary, that's the revolving account that you see and we carry that in the budget book. you see, and we carry that in the budget book. The student activity accounts don't show in the budget book, but they're monitored out of the finance office.
I wrote a report on this about seven, eight, 10 years ago that turned out to be the basis for how we do this. We were under scrutiny at the time to use money that was available and created by students to, quote, "help balance the budget." And the purpose of the report was to respond to that request by the finance committee to establish what our rules were. I don't know whether you can find that, but it should be in there.
I need my own mic. I keep talking to you guys, and I know I need the mic or it doesn't get picked up on Westboro TV. I can go back and pull those minutes. And there was a really good quality discussion that we've had with FinCom over the years around wanting to understand the way that we leverage the revolving accounts that help us to provide budgetary offset. So as we warm up to coming into budget season, you know, you are going to find that, you know, looking at the offsets that we carry through the revolving accounts, for example, the athletic director's account is very small. You'll see that in budgeting because a good portion of that budgetary work is covered through student activity fees. And so the community ed, they pay a portion offset of $200,000 a year that they pay for the electricity custodial use and building use, as an example. So the FinCom just wanted to understand with transparency our methodology, and so we actually developed the content and the base amount of what needed to be in each revolving account based upon kind of a good working group we set up with them. So when we look into the budget book, we'll pull that out and make sure that we highlight it again, but it's a nice part of budget process each year to kind of get our head wrapped around all the pieces of funding, the grants, the revolving, and then the budget money all kind of being leveraged to provide the services that drive the district.
You okay?
I just want to add one thing to what you said. Sarah, so your question regarding seeing stipends for the student activity accounts, legally, no payroll-type expenditures can come out of the student activity accounts, whether if it's salary or stipends.
So I think the confusion for me was the name of the account. I'm now, you know, I'm reconciling it by saying this is probably just not an extracurricular activity account. This is strictly for school-related or, you know, so I just need to, but the name of the account did.
I totally agree.
Okay.
We have to take a vote because we got a motion and a second.
That's true. Okay, so we had our discussion as well.
We did have a discussion.
Therefore, all those in favor of the motion. Opposed? Five zero zero. Thank you very much. We'll move on. Schedule for Budget Review. Now, this is exciting.
So I have updated the FY '25 draft budget scheduling, planning schedule. We can check off the first one off of our list. That's tonight, so we're gonna cut on that.
It's always nice to have progress.
Yes, moving forward. And the budget process is going to go very quickly, so I'm gonna start diving in, like I said earlier, I'm gonna start diving in then in the next week or two.
One of the things that's helpful as you just kind of map out this budget process is it's a good time to kind of look back at last year's presentations, flip through the old budget book, which kind of has a better familiarity if you want to remember those pieces. We're happy to sit with anyone and just kind of walk through questions around the pieces as you kind of get warmed up for the process. But our budgeting is different than most of the other departments in that we chunk it out to you through the several presentations so that you're seeing the pieces of the budget as it's developed for its proposals. And we'll keep that process, but when you look at this list, like when Anita and I went through it, especially because it's her first time through it, we decided to hold the, kind of, the design. I would imagine that after she and I have done this one time together, that she might want to tweak it, you know, and it's her show in a lot of ways. And so we'll move the meetings around to work against kind of her sense of it after we do it one time together. And I think you guys always have control over whether or not you want to modify the way we present these. Our goal is to put digestible volume in front of you for the budget and let you contemplate the discussions and then move towards the final vote. But it does move really quickly, so, you know, it's a matter of getting a feel for it, so. I think the dates look pretty good, but every year, we kind of miss something. So I would say review them, and if you're comfortable, you can, you know, go ahead, but we can amend them at any time, but it's just to give you the lay of the land, all right?
I guess I would just comment that the endpoints are set by the town charter because of the delivery of this information to the Board of Selectmen, and it's their calendar that we're trying to match. And I guess I would also ask Amber to enlighten everybody on September 21, the Town Budget Summit, which is also a driver from across the street.
Yes, so when Kristi became town manager, one of the things she wanted to do was to consolidate the partnership of discussions and to allow opportunities for the boards to come together and to facilitate conversation amongst us and for us to hear from each other the different aspects of our budget that we thought were going to be kind of flashpoints, you know, during the year. So the Budget Summit was originated by her, and the design, we meet here, our board should be here, and it's an opportunity for you to hear what all of the different committees anticipate will be kind of the major factors in their budget development for the upcoming year. We are currently developing the PowerPoint that we'll use that highlights the areas of key focus that we think will impact our budget development. So it's about transparency, information, and just a flow of updates. And it's meaningful, and it's really good to hear the presentations from everybody all at once. So the different committees come in and do a brief kind of highlight. And so we're kind of prepping for that now. I usually call out here the pieces, but, you know, I'm not seeing major, major drivers that I think would be unanticipated. You're in a small window of hiatus in that all of your contracts are cennelled. So coming into a school year like this, you're in the last year of your bus contract. So the big ticket item that will impact our budget would be the negotiation of that contract. So that's an example of the kind of indicator that they want us to call out early so people all know full transparency, and then if we have any really anticipated large capital items. So we'll be transparent about both of those and put together a few slides. I don't see any big items right now. I mean, the ones that Anita's really doing some research on right now are the bus triggers for like what the annual kind of increases in our area have looked like as we try to ascertain how much money we want to add to the budget in that arena. But our contracts, we know fully what we will be paying people, and so rolling that salary number becomes, you know, pretty solid.
Because my comment on the Budget Summit allows all the departments to hear everybody else. In the past, before the request by the town manager to do this, you know, each department was sort of in their own silo, and they didn't know what others needed, and there really was sometimes some aggravation about how much money was being given to one department over the other. One of the things this does is help each department understand the needs of the other departments in town, and also an understanding as to why that amount of money is being requested so that they have an opportunity to say what's fair within the outcome of this whole process. So it's a positive thing, and I think you maybe not enjoy it because it's a long night, but at least be able to learn from it when we do it.
Well, we have, for that night, will there be a public meeting for us posted if we all show up? Like, I think we need to.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, typically, I would have, yes. I mean, the thing is, I'll have Lynn posted either way, so whoever, like, so she'll post that meeting as, like we do before town meetings. So you can confer, you can come, you can attend, you can sit together and participate, you know, and then also contribute.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? None, we'll move on. Vote for a board member to the Westboro TV. Hi, Karen, how are you?
We have one more year next year. I thought it was this year.
Great, thanks.
I need my glasses.
All right, good evening.
Captain, you know.
For better or worse. Good evening, I'm Karen Henderson. I am the general manager at Westboro TV, which is our town's independent 501(c)(3) local access station that provides public, educational, and government coverage across town that is for, by, and about Westboro. So as many of you are aware, Westboro TV and the Westboro Partner, I'm sorry, and Westboro Public Schools have a partnership where my staff and I record countless musical and school-based events, that's K through 12 and at the Borough, as well as sporting events at the high school, many of which are live-streamed. In addition to event coverage, Westboro TV joins with Westboro High School in like a business education partnership to provide numerous journalism and broadcast opportunities for our students. So we offer them a professional studio space for those students to anchor and edit videos, which are then broadcast online to the online news site at the school, the Lobby Observer. And our WTV staff teaches, facilitates, and supports students in creating their own shows, which are widely viewed by the Westboro High School community and also by the community at large. Westboro TV also provides high school journalism students with authentic experiences in filming and commentating Westboro High School sports games. And throughout the years, many students have had either paid or unpaid internships through Westboro TV, including at Westboro High School. There's a Quest program, and they have participated in that and gained a lot of experiences in all aspects of video production. So I love the collaboration between Westboro High School and Westboro TV, just because it offers students the opportunity to practice and perfect effective communications and storytelling, which I really feel like, you know, can benefit them in many college majors that they might pursue, and also any careers in the future. So I'm very proud of the strong relationship we've developed over the years, and I look forward to continuing that collaboration moving forward. So tonight, you'll be appointing a new member to our Board of Directors to fill the seat formerly held by the Westboro High School Journalism Teacher, Kathy Stoker, who recently left the district for a different teaching career. And if I could just offer a quick note of appreciation to Kathy, who was really a wonderful rep for you on our board and did great work offering her students authentic, hands-on learning experiences in journalism and media studies. So thanks to her, but she's no longer going to be on the board, so that's where you're appointing a new member tonight. The bylaws of Westboro TV outline the makeup of our Board of Directors for our nonprofit. There are three seats that are appointed by the Select Board, there are three seats appointed at large, and there is one seat appointed by the school committee. The term is for three years, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or I'll turn it over to Amber for a recommendation.
Can you define the form of the corporation or the company in terms of how it's structured under Mass Law?
Talking about Westboro TV.
Yeah.
So it's not really formed under Massachusetts law, it's actually the FCC. So it's actually at national level way back in the 80s, when cable first came to be, the FCC said, "That's great cable, come on into our towns, run all your wires along our public ways. However, we want to keep a local voice." You know, there was a little bit of a fear back then that they would determine everything you could see, and how are you going to get other things? And so way back then, they formed a law where the cable companies can come into town, Verizon and Charter, we have in Westboro, and they can offer cable, make a lot of money from our residents here. But one of the things they do is enter into an agreement with the town, a contract with the town, in order to do that. And one item in that very long contract is that we would like our local access stations, and the cable companies then fund those stations. So when the town enters into the agreement with, just recently, Verizon, the Board of Selectmen sign off on that contract. That's negotiated with a cable advisory committee, negotiates that contract. A big piece of that is, what are you going to do for our local access station? And they can give up to 5% of their gross annual revenue, based on their subscribers in Westboro, would go to Westboro TV. So we are a nonprofit, it's not paid for by the Westboro taxes, it's paid for through the cable companies, and they provide that money to us, and in turn, we provide services to the town.
Thank you.
I would echo Karen's acknowledgement of Kathy Stoker, and I think she developed a journalism program that was really highly sought after by students. We have a new faculty member coming on board this year, and I'm asking you to appoint Chris Martin, Director of Fine Arts. Chris is looking to develop the media studies component, and he's working with Brian Callian, who asked him to step in and partner with the new faculty member and Karen to look at the, kind of, the media study arm of our work and the presentation and video work. So I think it's kind of, he's very excited by that opportunity to do that collaboration. So I would ask that you appoint Chris Martin to the position on the board. I think one of the advantages of having it be Chris is that he has a K to 12 connection, and I think it brings a wider informational connection for her, for Karen, and the board, and then back from the board to our district to have somebody who's kind of not just at the high school. So I'm very pleased to ask for you to appoint him if you would take a vote.
Before we do that, what is the time commitment for, let's say, a school committee board member to the Westboro TV board?
Sure, so the board members, we meet quarterly, so I meet quarterly with my board, and really, the requirement is to attend that meeting in some way, shape, or form. And we can do that in a hybrid manner now, thanks to our own selves. But they, so we meet quarterly, and in between, I will send updates or information that they can read at their leisure. I always try to see if we can get a board that has, much like any other committee on town, but lots of different opinions and perspectives and all, and certainly really helpful to have somebody from the school side who knows what that relationship is. Again, I was kind of describing us quickly, but we've got our public arm, our education arm, and our government arm. And so to have somebody who represents your views from the education piece of that and make sure that you feel like, okay, Westboro TV is doing what we need them to do, is really nice. And Kathy, again, did a great job with that, but I'd be thrilled to be working with Chris. He's already reached out. We had a meeting with the two new journalism teachers up at the high school. Well, not journalism new to them, one is a new employee, the other has taught English. And we already had a meeting, actually had a couple meetings, to talk about the program.
With that, then I'd make a motion that the school committee appoint Chris Martin as the board member from the school committee on Westboro TV.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? It's pretty simple. Thank you very much, Karen. All those in favor? Aye, five zero zero.
Just one more thing before I go. I'm hoping, if I can get time at some point on your agenda later in the year, I would love to be able to come back with either Chris or the new teachers to talk about a little more in-depth of what Westboro TV has been doing with the schools and with a couple students to show you some of the work. You know, I mentioned the students coming down to the studio and the work we do on event coverage, but another thing that we've tried to do in the last year was show a little bit more of the teaching and learning that's going on, and I think that that's a little bit harder to do, but we really want to make an effort to show that off. I think the community deserves to see some of that, or would be interested to see some of that. And as parents, some of us who still have kids in the district get to see some of that, but it's a lot harder for other people who are supporting the budget to know what's going on in the schools, and if we can shed a little more light on that, I think that's beneficial for everyone. So hopefully, later this year, we can find some time on your agenda, and we can talk about that a little bit more.
Sure, we can. Very good. I'd look forward to that.
I'd appreciate it, I'd appreciate it. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Karen. Have a nice night.
Thank you for talking to microphones.
Yeah, they're working pretty good tonight. Okay, next item is a discussion of town meeting articles.
Okay, so this is an, your timing is looking really good tonight. You're off to a good start here. This is an important discussion, and I'm going to step you through two pieces of it. This is an important discussion, and I'm going to step you through two pieces of it. You have a vote to award the funding bid for the high school chiller replacement, the system that heats and cools the whole high school. So Daniel, if you could click on the WHS Cooling System link there. No, that's not it. Sorry. If we go back. Let's see, that one, perfect. So we originally bid to have the high school chiller system replaced and to incorporate the opportunity to cool the gymnasiums. And again, we've spoken about this, that the gymnasiums have never been air-conditioned. The coverage of those spaces was value-engineered out when we renovated the high school back in the 90s. And I can tell you that the gyms have stagnant lack of airflow in those spaces and are incredibly hot. Or like incredibly cold and still no good airflow. But the portion that we're looking at is getting an improvement to the circulation of that system, which ended up being left kind of, you know, not incorporated. When we did that bid, we went and spoke to the ARPA Committee, we received an approval for funding for the replacement of the chiller system and the goal to hopefully incorporate the gyms. What we found out when we did the studies, and we moved through that, was that the chillers on the roof could not pick up the additional capacity for the gyms, and that we needed to expand their use. And when we went out to bid for the full package, it came back at 2.4 million, it came back higher than the allotment of funding that we received for ARPA. So we made the decision to break the bid apart. We went back and asked the company to rebid in two separate projects. So now we have before you two separate pieces. We have the piece to replace the chillers at the high school, which will cool the whole system, and it will be new chiller system, better fuel efficiency, better capacity, better airflow, a huge improvement to the system of cooling that kind of takes care of that whole massive building. And then we have a second bid for the gyms. So what I'm asking for you tonight is to award the bid to, thank you, Veterans Development Corporation for the total provided, if you want to scroll down for me, Daniel. Did that incorporate the percentage? I gotta, I can't do it off of that, I'm sorry, I'm going to open up the other document. Fine. Thank you, right there is fine. Okay, I needed a second to orient myself, I apologize. I looked at this stuff so much, you'd think I'd have it imprinted in my brain. I wanted to make sure before I asked for the vote and the number, that I indicated you can see that we then are, their bid came in, we are also carrying, and we had them incorporate, the 10% construction cost contingency and the cost for their service to oversee the implementation of the project. So you see at the bottom there, you see the $108,845, which is contingency for unanticipated cost impacts, and then the $14,000 is for their additional construction scope monitoring. So I am asking you to approve the Veterans Development Corporation to implement this contract at $1,211,295. The money is already awarded for ARPA, sitting there, available to cover these costs. Actually, there's about 1.5 million allotted for ARPA, so we're well within the scope of the money allotment that they've provided. And I believe you can award this bid so that we can get going to order the components and begin the project.
Just a couple of, I guess, points relative to this bid. It's been around, the process has been around for a long time. Most of the work behind this was done by the Facilities Department with Kelly and Bob Ferguson honchoing RMF engineering. So what you see, if you look in the Note 1 on the summary page, that's this one, at the bottom, that the engineer's estimate all-in was $1,356,000. The low bid, as you see, contractor cost at $1,888,000. In discussion with them at a Zoom meeting, which Amber and I and Kelly participated in, the questions were put to them, what the performance of this particular contractor was, as well as Austro Electric, as well as other members of the Facilities Department participated as well, to actually ask questions of the engineer to understand whether the history of both companies, Austro and Vet Development Corporation, had good recommendations, which ultimately, on review, they did. At the same time, since we know that things go bump in the night, the only number that, at that time that we were talking about was the $1,888,000. So through discussion, we asked them to add a contingency, and you'll note in the note that they take no responsibility for how it's going to work out, but 10% is a reasonable number. And we also asked, well, are you going to supervise the work? I.e., when the guy's in the field, are you going to, you know, participate, walk through the job, see what's going on, make sure things are right, et cetera? And surprisingly, the answer was, well, no, we don't have any money in the contract to do that. So we asked them to come up with an amount for them to, quote, "supervise construction" to be able to review invoices before they're submitted to the town for payment, which resulted in the $14,000. So the good news on this one is that the bottom line that we'll allocate, I assume we'll allocate in the budget, is the $1,211,295, and hopefully, it will come in at that amount or less. And of course, the secret to make sure that that happens is that, in fact, we, the School Committee, the Facilities Department, and every other player in the town watches what happens and make sure that things don't slip away by inattentiveness and not picking up things that happen, either in terms of review by the engineer, and that we set up a program internally to make sure that we have at least people watching the day-to-day and the document transmittals and approval, so that we can stay ahead of this rather than behind. And I think, you know, we now have in place people who can do that within the School Department, and I think all of us will have an interest as well to make sure that we do our best to come in at a dollar amount less than the $1,200,000. So those are sort of my comments in the background of what happened for this document to get here in front of us tonight. So, I can't remember whether I made it. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to understand, so the original bid was for 2.4 million dollars?
It was 2.8, sorry, I apologize, I was just looking it up. It was, the original bid when it came in was 2.8 million, which was beyond the scope of what they had voted for us for the ARPA funds, so that's when we went back.
But it was two projects.
Right.
That's the point. It was two projects, and we didn't have enough money to do it.
Right, so it was separated into two projects, and one of them fits within that allocated money that we have. No, then we're going to have to ask the town for the additional million or so to cover...
The other project, which is next, we're going to talk about the other one.
Correct. I just want to understand, if we go this way, and the town approves that additional million dollars, would that project be done at the same time? Because I'm, or not necessarily?
No, because they're not the same contractor, so there's no way to amend the schedule to be the same. And because of that, there's another $14,000 for our, excuse me, RMF to supervise the other project as well.
They might, I mean, it depends on the ordering, it depends on the arrival of equipment, it depends on all of them. Certainly, if we, if you move forward to approve the next one that we're going to speak about, they could run roughly parallel just by accident, or be in, you know, separate arenas because of how long it takes to get equipment, so, you know, I think...
There's two things to this. Number one, it's not good to say things like that positively will happen, because they never do. The second is to protect ourselves by virtue of the language in the contract, that in fact, it's a fixed-price contract, and there, of course, there are always extras, but, and so we enforce the contract. And we actually asked with this process to have a third party review the contract terms and conditions to get what we wanted in the contract, to be sure that that's what was bid, and not some surprise later on when disaster strikes and the contract doesn't work. So we did our best to try to make sure that the contracts were drafted correctly with the terms and conditions that we wanted. As far as we could tell, as far as I could tell, that they have been. So, yes, they are two separate things, they're by two separate contractors, and the enforcement to get the schedule to be performed according to the contract is ours to do.
My only question in addition would be, by separating those two contracts, is it going to be more expensive this way?
Yes, but we didn't have enough money, and we still don't, because this one, we have the money already available, we can, if we award tonight, they start tomorrow. The other one that we're going to talk about is bid with the bid award having to happen in and around the town meeting in the fall. So in effect, between now and October, the other one doesn't do anything. So, and we had to do that, because until the town meeting votes the money for the other contract, it doesn't exist. We cannot award without having the town funded the project.
Yeah, I understood. Do we know the difference in the cost of doing it as one contract versus two?
Yeah, we knew that the two contracts were 2-something million dollars.
2.8.
When was this, last year, last June, was it?
Yeah.
We did this, and we didn't have the money, so we couldn't go forward anyway. So the idea was, because of the volatility of the construction business, to separate them and see whether we could do better that way.
I think as well, we thought that maybe cost escalations would start to come down as things became more available, so, you know, again, I think pro and con, I mean, you know, it is, it is what it is, right? We have two bids, we're going to move forward to replace the chillers, the money is sitting there, we need to expend those ARPA funds or give them back. We need, they are encumbered for us at this time to utilize for this project bid that's in front of you, and the second one we'll discuss next, you'll need to decide how you want to proceed.
By the way, if you look at the spreadsheet of all the bidders, one of the things that was telling between the bidders was the electrical cost bid, which was significant between the low bidder and the rest of them, which actually occurred because we bid this separately. Had we done it earlier, then we would have seen a very high electrical cost in this project. So we did benefit in terms of separating and bidding it separately. The spread, if you can read these numbers, was $1,088 was the low bidder for the contractor's part, and the high bid in the list, I assume is the far-right one, $1,371, so that's the savings of roughly $300,000 in this bid process, which is, you know, I mean, all the process here is all done under state law. So I don't know that I did or I didn't, but I'll make a motion that the School Committee vote to award this contract to the, to the low bidder, as provided here, Vet Development Corporation, Inc. of Norwell, Massachusetts. And as I said, if we do award, they can start tomorrow.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye, 5-0-0. Thank you. Now I'll leave the other one to Amber.
Yes, so, so there is additional funding, ARPA funding, you know, incorporated, we anticipate, given the lock-in on this bid for the one you just voted, that you would have roughly, the additional funding would, you know, revert back to the ARPA Committee to be reallocated, and the contingency also unexpended would revert back to ARPA to be re-expended by that committee. Steve is a representative on there, along with myself and the Finance Subcommittee, and then all those recommendations go to FinCom for a discussion and a vote. And so there is a good process in place, but there will be a good chunk of money that would revert back from this particular allocation. What happens with it after that goes back to that committee, but it's certainly in good faith, that, you know, that is, that is very positive. So the second bid, so then when they broke the bids apart, they then pushed both of them out for active bid, and the second one came in for the gym. So the project cost for the gym was higher, higher than we had hoped, but, you know, these are what these bids do, this is the low bid, and the low bid amount for the work to cool the gyms and to complete that will be $2,448,702. That carries inclusive in at the $14,000 for the implementation of the project oversight, and the $224,882 contingency carried for unanticipated cost overages or problems. So I think, you know, that's an amount that you need to discuss and a process that you want to make sure you're feeling really good about, because you have to, we have to defend that at town meeting. So I forwarded the warrant article, and I put a million-dollar placeholder in there. The original estimate, if we just split the 2.8, would have been about 1.5 million that I would have put in there. I just didn't want to telegraph that number publicly when we're also then going out to bid, and so I carried it at a million, just as a placeholder, working to talk with Christie about that and with Steve. And then the bid is here, so, you know, we need to forward, I did telegraph to Christie that we'd opened the bids and that you all would be discussing this amount, and if you vote to award contingent, you're not going to award it until the town would vote it, you would have to approve this amount for the warrant article, and then we would carry that to October Town Meeting and seek funding for this portion of the project.
So we have voted before a certain amount of money, I believe, that we're carrying, let's say, in the kitty. Yes, no for this?
Say that again, sorry.
Well, right now, it looks like this article would go across the street at $2,487,000 with no other funds available, correct?
Right.
Okay, how did we use up what was, or is that Hastings? Am I thinking of the Hastings money that we...
Yeah, there's no funding available for this, so there's, there's no carried funding available. The only funding we had was the original ARPA allocation of 1.6 million, and you just voted to award the first portional bid to use those funds, and because they're ARPA, ARPA will not partner, they don't want to, my understanding, when we went through the ARPA discussions, and Steve has a better memory than I, but, is that they don't want partial allocations. So logically, you would say, well, wait a minute, there's almost $500,000 of ARPA funding that we could push against this cost to offset it, but it's my understanding that, and again, I can go back to Christie and clarify, they have, there's a company that's helping them implement the parameters of the ARPA funding, and originally, their perspective was that they didn't want it to ride with other money. It was supposed to be like a clean, packaged allocation of funding.
So let me, let me see if I can translate that. There is a balance that would, could be voted by the Board of Selectmen to be used in certain ways to benefit the town. That's good. Apparently, we didn't pay the electrical bill. But relative to this comment, that... But relative to this comment that there isn't enough ARPA money to cover the two million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, so from the point of view of ARPA, splitting the baby, i.e. the half a million we just talked about, isn't going to happen, the selectmen would award some amount of money out of that to somebody to, to do a complete project, so we're not going to do that. So at this point, to go forward with this, and that is to provide rooftop air conditioning units for, to cover both gyms, the, the cost now would be two million four hundred and eighty-seven thousand with all the stuff we just talked about, the base bid plus a contingency of two hundred and twenty-four thousand and of RMF engineering inspection fees, if you will, to go with it. So I think at this point, the, this is the first time the committee has seen now what this scope of work is going to cost. So again, it's the air condition both gyms to provide this construction and whether or not on behalf of the town that we think roughly a two and a half million dollar investment is a good investment for that purpose. So I think all those things are on the table to talk about because ultimately, when the committee decides that we want to bring this article forward at, at this point in time, we need to support it as best we can with the argument as to why we want to do this. I would think that this amount of money could very well be difficult. Now, the evaluation of whether this is good, a good process, project is going to be part of what the capital expenditures committee will be reviewing against all other needs of the town. And I suspect as soon as we put this number across the street, assuming a positive vote of the committee, it will go into the, into the collection of things that will be asked to be reviewed by the capital expenditures committee, which will happen later this month, I suspect.
Yeah, though, just to piggyback off of that, Fall Town Meeting is currently carrying, I think, seventeen articles, the vast majority of article, of which one of them is ours, Article eleven, I think it still is. One of the pieces is that, you know, any of the large capital projects being carried are rotating through the capital process and the vast majority of those come forward from March Town Meeting. We currently have two design projects underway to bring forward a hard number on two capital projects and anticipate in the March, which would be the Mill Pond Roof Restoration Project and the Hastings Complete Roof Replacement. Those are the two that we carried forward that are in the queue and we were voted design dollars in March and we're now moving forward. This number is kind of a fallout number.
No, you have to be, it has to go to this town meeting because the contract award says?
That's what I'm saying, it does need to go to this town meeting. This article needs and is on the warrant to go to this town meeting. But the next step of capital rotations, you know, won't include this, we're either in or out, like.
Well, it will, it will be evaluated for all articles on this Fall Town Meeting.
Yes, it will be in that queue, I'm not sure that the capital committee is meeting to look at the seventeen articles.
They always have.
You know, well.
But you may be right, who knows, but they always have.
We just go where they tell us, right? I mean, I, again, like, I, I think it's just important that, like, you know, they didn't anticipate this number. Okay, they, that's an important part of the conversation for you, I guess that's why I'm trying to separate out part of the memory of the process, which is, you know, they gave us money for ARPA, they thought we were good to get those coolers in and to complete that project and when we broke the bid apart, they agreed that that was a good process, it made sense, so we could allocate the ARPA funds, they've been along for the ride with us through that discussion and then cracking this bid gives you a big number that, you know, you're now looking at, that's beyond the scope of the amount allocation that they thought they would see. So I think it's just an important process for you guys to, to be ready to have all those conversations.
Well, you know, given the amount of money, it's, it's a difficult thing, in my opinion, for the town to, to deal with, but because of the structure of the way this was done, we paid twenty-eight thousand dollars for additional engineering for it to be bid and go forward to this point. I think for the benefit of the taxpayer, we have an obligation to bring it before the town in whatever review process they're going to make because this dies if it doesn't go to this Fall Town Meeting and we have to do it all over again and potentially spend another twenty-eight thousand dollars to go out to bid. So the, the, the bad news is, it may be very difficult, but I think we owe it to the town to at least present it for discussion to find out, you know, what, what, what the review of it all would be because it's certainly not going to get cheaper.
I, I agree with you, Sarah, you were gonna.
Well, I have a couple of questions. One is, I guess, from, you know, a structural need sense, I need to understand what is, I understand that the movement of the air and trying to get, you know, the first article that we discussed, what is the need for this?
This will only deliver air conditioned, air conditioning to the two gyms. Everything else is handled by what we just voted.
Okay.
And I guess the second piece of that, the existing equipment is dying and needs to be replaced and that's why we did what we did.
Okay. Secondly, why would the engineering work be wasted if we were to push this out? I mean, we'd certainly have to go out to bid again.
Drawings won't be.
Right.
But to go through the state's bid process, even with the same drawings and perhaps with the same engineer, will cost us twenty-eight grand or so, who knows?
Okay, and then are we absolutely certain that the ARPA funds that are remaining, we will not be able to utilize those, that those were, you know, that's out of the question?
I would say, but.
Most likely based upon process, but again, once you vote this number and it moves across the street, you know, they, they will have strategic conversations with the capital committee about best funding options to, you know, and if there's a way to combine funds, they would offer it. I don't think that they would withhold those if they thought they could pull that borrow down, they would.
So, so just to make a quick answer, the only way we'll know what will happen is we put it on, you know, on the agenda for the town manager, the board of selectmen to review this and go through the process and they could say, yes, we can do something like that or we don't have any money, you have to wait for the annual town meeting and then the discussion I just had, which is this bid and its validity dies, you know, let's say the first of our, no, the first of November, which is what the contract says. Under state law, once the bid is in hand, you only have thirty days to award and we can't award until the money is there.
But I mean, so I guess my argument would be that I agree for the sake, I don't know how long the ARPA funds are valid in terms of use.
Another year.
Another year. So, you know, my, my only concern was, would be that we don't want to lose those if there's a chance that we would be able to utilize those potentially.
No, the, the, the original request of all the town departments was double what we had for ARPA and so they have been, Board of Selectmen is slowly making awards to those people who have, you know, based on discussion and, and evaluation, they've spent roughly half of it, I think, at this time, with the allocation sitting there to do the rest of it as well. In other words, people have already said, I would like to have the balance in different pieces for different things.
Okay. So then, you know, I would feel as though I'm still not understanding the need for this, so I think that, you know, I'm not sure.
Well.
Yeah, and I, I start, were you gonna emphasize?
I'm not trying to convince you to the merit of whether this money is absolutely necessary given, let's say, other needs of the town, but what I'm saying is that for the benefit of the process, I, I think we have an obligation to present where we are to the town manager and the board of selectmen and let them tell us, you know, what their feelings are as to whether the, the merit of this against a, say, a, a new, I don't know, fire engine or, or a new something for the police department, you know, which one, which one do you want to do first? Unfortunately, we don't have enough money to go around.
They, they might have, I mean, again, it's a collaboration effort between the, the town and the schools in this discussion and then when you end up in front of the town meeting, it's the, you know, the will of, well, we have our package input before them financially, you know, I, I think they could fund part of it from free cash and do a borrow on part of it, like, there's all this process discussion until we forward, they could just, they could ask if ARPA funding that's remaining and there's probably between what we'll revert back and what, and what they have there, probably half a million sitting there that they might decide to push against that if they can combine funds, but none of those conversations can happen until we forward the number, the bid and the, and the discussion.
I, I think, given this, what I would suggest is that we vote to make the rest of the town aware of what the outcome of the bid process was and that we withhold our, our vote on this until the next school committee meeting so we can have the benefit of what comments come back from making them aware of this outcome.
But, I mean, that's certainly viable, all of it is, I mean, that's why it's before you for discussion until we crack the bids and came to public session, it's the first opportunity we've had to talk about it. I mean, it's one of the unique features of being a board like this, you don't really get to have this discourse till we're here, like, and we can't always plan out the direction of this work, that's why it's an authentic conversation. I don't know what the funding mechanisms would be in terms of ways to take the edge off this total and that's where the partnership and discussion has to start happening. The need, the need will be very individual to people's perspective, but the gyms are used by the whole community, they are used for after-school activities, they are used for evening basketball for this whole town, they are used by twelve hundred students daily rotating through them and sporting and athletic events for our teams. And the quality of air in there is very poor and they are stiflingly hot a good portion of the year and last time I looked, the world is not getting cooler and I think it's a serious consideration that we will end up with every space we have air-conditioned in our district. We have areas that are not cooled and in the lifetime of the trajectory of those buildings, you will start answering those questions because going to school is getting hot in terms of the temperature and airflow for the year that we're in. And so we've been discussing this for about six years. I mean, this article has come forward in a couple of different discussions and we've waited, but the price escalation, if, if we had done it my second year here, it would have been two hundred thousand dollars, we would have, you know.
Yeah, and that's true, I mean, what you see between the engineer's estimate on this and where it turned out is still, if you will, COVID inflation driven. But I, I think we can have a viable discussion when we get feedback from Board of Selectmen, assuming we could, and the town manager, in how it fits in with a request of others, number one, whether there's a funding path for this at this town meeting and if there isn't. And lastly, perhaps we could, you could have a request of the athletic director to respond to how this would benefit not only the town in regards to, we've been in, in the gym when we've had town meeting in there and it's been a thousand degrees, you know, as a way to support this article. I don't think we just want to run in there with what we know so far about why this is a viable.
Yeah, I think people think of gym and they think of athletics, but it is the meeting space, I mean, I'm sure Hallie could speak about the, the volume of use that those two gyms get for both the community and for the schools, both for programming, physical education, clubs, activities and town events. So on Sunday, during a very hot Sunday, Westboro Connects is hosting a Westboro For Life event where we had almost, over three hundred people last year. There's fifty-five vendors that are going to stand in that gym, invited to our community and it's a community hosted event, it's going to be brutal. So people expect when they walk in the building, because the building is air-conditioned, every time we go in to vote, someone asks me to put the air on in the gym and I explain that we don't have air in the gym. So the choice lies with you as a school committee, whether or not that's of value to you and then we would have to defend it to the town. My job is to put in front of you the work of the district and let you do your will. I'm presenting the number, I believe the need is important, but I, you know, defer to you and, and I'm comfortable with what you decide. I certainly can pull together a profile of the volume of use that flows through those gyms, you know, as a component, and we make a good defense of any article we bring to town meeting, I mean, we've been there before and we're not just going to walk in and ask for money, we would be putting together a thoughtful presentation. I will start compiling that. Can I ask a process question, Steve?
Yeah, I just want to make a point, I think, to all of us here, is that more than likely, it wouldn't be free cash, more than likely, it would be a borrow and the benefit of a borrow is that this fix benefits the future, doesn't help the person who's paying the bill today. So if you want to say, okay, I want to distribute this cost over the people who will benefit, a borrow is a better approach.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I, I think over my years of participating in this with you, my job is to present and, and to, and I think that town, the town is just a quality organization. We're very fortunate to be able to have this quality of authentic, open conversation with our colleagues about what makes sense and I don't believe this is an easy number to grapple with, it's the number that's slowing down this discussion. So, but these numbers only seem to be going up, so this is the problem, we keep waiting for a window of opportunity where we think these numbers might come down and they don't, they don't seem to be. But I like the idea and the proposal that you forward this number, the bid that we received, forward for discussion and I guess we would need to reach out to Christie to facilitate, like, what's the best format? Do we need to go to a school, to a select board meeting and have a conversation or send a rep, like, so I guess I would just say a little process-wise, maybe Steve and I could talk that through and follow up with Christie tomorrow. You know, the, it's a tight window here, I'm not sure when they're closing the warrant. You know, you can.
They don't have to close the warrant until late in September.
And we can also, again, forward these documents and the number in the draft of the warrant article to be discussed and then you could vote to forward it, you know, based upon what we hear back.
Would the summit not be an opportunity for that or no?
It would be too late, we really want to do something sooner, but I mean, it certainly could be discussed during the summit. I'm, I'm thinking that the last day the Board of Selectmen can close a warrant for a town meeting is fourteen days before, before that time, but obviously their schedule would be different.
We could ask to go to the meeting on the twelfth, they have a, they have a Board of Selectmen meeting, they haven't finalized that agenda yet, but I, we certainly could ask to do that and that would need to be the one we would use because you would have a school committee meeting then the next week. So I would say next steps would be, this was a really good discussion, I think we've surfaced a lot that you want to work with them to consider and then I'll reach out to Christie and work with Steve on a methodology to, to have more conversation with the select board.
Could ask for one more thing, do we know the expected lifetime of this installation and the anticipated cost of operation?
So the operational costs should actually improve overall for the system, I mean, the system we have is well beyond life, I mean, one of the benefits of Westboro is that our people keep stuff going forever, I mean, I, I think, you know, Bill has had, one of the things we found when we got up there is they kept saying, like, these are well past their lifespan and if you get a new system, they're going to be much more user-friendly, they're going to be better cost efficiency because they don't use as much energy, you know, all that kind of stuff that's outside of my wheelhouse, but, so.
I can answer that.
Twel- how many years?
Well, it's on, the high school was replaced and, and went into service around two thousand two, so we're twenty-one years there and we haven't done anything to the chillers, well, we've done some repairs on the chillers at Mill Pond, which are equally twenty-one years into the process. So actually, in today's market, it's whatever, whatever the life of the. So actually, in today's market, it's whatever the life of the electrical equipment, i.e. the motors on the chillers, pretty much. And so we can at least expect that. In other words, we wouldn't have to replace them again until the end of a borrow, which is usually 20 years in this town. So, you know, but I think the merits of it are not just for high school athletics, but it's for the whole town and all the things that we use gyms for. You know, we vote there, we do town meeting there frequently, we rent the space to the other users. And, you know, to the extent that we had an emergency in the town in the middle of summer at 100 degrees, then that would be the place where you would take people and put them in to take care of them. So, you know, I think there's a lot of merits that will support this because to the extent we ever choose to do it, now is the time. Because whatever we get is just going to cost more and probably not be as good. That's the nature of everything we do these days.
Do we have other requests coming forward at Fall Town Meeting?
No, just this.
This is the only thing that would be from?
This is our one.
Okay. And yeah, I think I would like to see, yes, exactly. I would like to see, like, yeah, some sort of rapport about how often the gyms are used and who's using them, so.
And what revenue we receive.
And why, yeah, why they're using them. And then, right, if, yes, because I know lots of other organizations rent the gym for.
I mean, we don't, and we, I mean, it's generally community use. So we do just, again, I want to be clear, like, we don't rent outside of Westboro. We do have people that, like, Westboro Connects, it's, you know, we're co-hosts of that event, though, so they aren't paying for that space, though, because we're one of the hosts for this particular event, but.
Don't leave out the rec department, who basically schedules.
Right, exactly. I mean, so outside of the revenue discussion, the use question, the viability of how many hundreds of people, thousands of people are circulating through that gym each week, yes, I'll start compiling that memo. And if you think of other things you want to know, you know, just email me, text me. I'll start pulling together kind of a viable viability, and then we'll see about reaching out to Christie to see if we can get on the agenda for the 12th.
So I guess I would modify what we might do on this and just move that we ask the superintendent to provide this information to the rest of the town for discussion purposes to determine the merit of creating a warrant article.
Great.
So that's sort of a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, very good. All right.
Are you really taking a vote on it?
Vote all in favor of that motion?
All those, no, you don't, but why don't we? All those in favor?
I think it's good to have a vote on the record that you want me showing the bid number forward over to the town and a process for discussion. So I just want to thank you for the, I've been waiting to bring that number here. I've been, you know, certainly.
For a long time, very long time.
You know. You have one more action item on your agenda.
Okay, the next item in the open forum is vote to reappoint the superintendent to the Assabett Valley Collaborative. I so move.
I will second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this point.
You do have a brief need for an executive session.
Sure. So I make a motion that we vote to meet an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the school committee and under Mass General Law, Chapter 30, I think it's A, Section 22G2, Purpose 7, to review and approve executive session minutes from June 28, 2023, and July 19, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Roll call, so you have to do last name, yeah.
Moscow, yes.
Vincent, yes.
Wright, yes.
Bachelor, yes.
Amsterdam, yes.
Good. So we now move into executive session. And the lights are off, and so we're good to go.